Citizens of Double Oak, it is now seven o'clock. The meeting will now come to order. Out of respect for those in attendance, please refrain from talking to other members of the audience during the meeting. For public input during citizen comment or public hearings, all speakers will be limited to three minutes each. Our meeting this evening will be broadcast live on the Town of Double Oak YouTube channel. Once on the channel, please click on the videos tab at the top and then click on the live button. I would like to ask our town secretary Eileen Kennedy to please call the rule.
Mayor Pro Tem Johnson.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Pro Tem Shawan Redd.
Here.
A little feedback. Mr. Whisenhunt.
Here.
Ms. Parsons.
Here.
Ms. Hillier.
Here.
We have a form.
Thank you. The next segment of the council meeting is intended for citizen comment on any subject except for those matters that appear on the agenda. Those citizens wishing to address an agenda item will be recognized at the appropriate time. Any citizen comments at this time will not receive any verbal council response, nor must the citizen expect any discourse with the Mayor Pro Tem or any other council member. This is a procedural rule, not intended to convey a lack of interest or discourtesy, but rather to provide time for all citizens to speak and to move on to new business of the council. As a reminder, all proceedings of the town council, including citizens' comments, are recorded for record-keeping purposes. We have a few names on the list for, oh, for non-agenda items, we have no one. So, alright. And we do have three names on for the agenda items when we get to those items. So, we will move on to item number one, discussion consideration on salary ranges within the Double Oak Police Department. We do have some town citizens, Anita Nelson.
Anita Nelson, 345 Oak Trail Drive, Double Oak, Texas. I will try not to get emotional about this because I'm going to bring up something that the police officers and Dave and I share. First of all, I'm here because I support our police department. And quite frankly, I feel like they've gotten pushed back to the side of things. There's been a lot of growth around Double Oak. We've got Lantana, they have, last time I heard, 12,000 people over there. Copper Canyon, I don't know how much it's grown, and Bartonville is growing too. And they do have a police force, but I don't think it's 24/7. We are the only one, or was, the only town in this area that had 24/7 service with our police officers, and that's a big deal. Now, when just many people come to one area, that's when you find crime. The more people, the more options for crime, and quite frankly, a lot more domestic abuse at home, and I'm sure the chief would verify that. So, what happens when somebody breaks into your house? And I started, my husband said, "Why don't you start like that?" And I said, "Well, you know what? On the way over here, I thought, one night, at 1:30 in the morning, somebody was in our house, 1:30 a.m. in the morning, and Dave got up, we were asleep, and the front door was open. It just so happened to be Officer Sneed. It could have been anybody. Our door, excuse me, our door flew open, and he had driven by, and he noticed that it was open, and he walked in to see if we're okay. That could have been anybody. So, if that would have been somebody there to harm us at 1:30 in the morning, who would I call? Who would we call? If we don't have our police officers strongly supported and present here in Double Oak, Denton County Sheriff, and we'd be dead by then. Or maybe, my husband wouldn't, because he can shoot, but I would be dead by then. So, I just think that we really need to step back and think about just how we should support our police officers, because we need them more than we even realize. With all that's being built up, and with the economy the way it is, there's going to be more crime, because people are going to need more money that don't have it, and they're going to start, there's more crime, they're going to start stealing things and breaking in. So, I support it, support them, and what concerns me is when I look at this agenda tonight, you've got, it's under new business agenda, consideration and action, the first two items, no action, and that's our police department. Why is there not any action? That just baffles me. I suspect I know why, and I suspect I know who did that, but there's nothing I can do about right now, but you guys better wake up, and the people out here better wake up. We need our police officers. We need them, and they're not being supported right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Anita. Dr. Ira Minasian.
Hi, I'm Dr. Ira Minasian, 115 Tanglewood Lane, Double Oak. I've been a citizen here for over two decades, lived in three different houses here in Double Oak. I've seen our police force go from a single police officer to what we have now. You know, I want to emphasize the importance of supporting our police financially. When we had a full police force, we were able to do a lot more than we did with one police officer. There's a lot of things that people may not remember, but I remember when there was a crime spree, people kicking in back doors of houses, going through Lantana, Bartonville, Double Oak, Copper Canyon, and they're kicking in the back doors of all these houses, there are a bunch of criminals from Dallas, and those criminals got caught because of our police department, because of evidence found from one of the crime scenes here in Double Oak, by our police department. The other towns didn't have the facilities, or maybe even the interest, to really dig into those things, but ours did. We've had a citizen, late at night, a vehicle got pulled over, it was suspicious, it got our police officer's attention. This would have been a shift that wouldn't have been covered if we didn't have 24-hour policing. That citizen was in the process of being kidnapped, and it was because the police officer noted that vehicle and paid attention that that citizen is alive today. That's a big deal. I mean, that's something that we can't quantify, we can't say, "That has the value of this many dollars," okay? I want to talk about what we're, you know, we're all people who have budgets at home, we're all kind of looking at our budgets and going, "This is a lot of money." It is, it is a lot of money, but not in the scope of a city, okay, or a town of our size. We have over 1,100 homes. When you factor the cost of police and what we need, and all the support they need, and even bringing them up to par, which is what I wanted to recommend to you guys, is that you not just support them and say, "Okay, we'll keep giving you what we're giving you." Obviously, that's not working, we're three officers short. We need to support them in a way that they can actually win and get good new officers, additional officers, so that we can be full-staffed. That's our goal, or at least my goal. I want to see a fully-staffed police force, I want to make sure that we give them the resources they need to get that. I know we always try to look for alternatives, and it's good to have Plan Bs and Cs, I'm like that, too, it's really important, but, you know, Plan A is pretty simple, pay enough, you'll get the right people, and that's what I think we need to do. I think we need to bring our budget up to where it needs to be, so that the police, the chief can hire the additional officers, and that our police can be at least on par, at least on average, with the surrounding cities. You know, it's a drop in the bucket when you start to think about the little increment it'll make to us as a town. You know, our town budget, our town taxes, are 10% of the overall property taxes that we pay. The majority of your property taxes are school, then you have the county, and then 10% of it is the town. So, it's really a small amount of your money that you're paying is really going to our town, and only about half of that's going to our police budget. So, it's not a huge amount to us as homeowners to support the police force that we need. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Ira. There was an additional name on the agenda items, probably should have been on non-agenda, Dave Nelson. We do have some comments at the end of the meeting, we can fit you in there, does that work? Okay. Next, the presentation by Police Chief Ruben Rivas on the discussion and consideration on the salary ranges with the Double Oak Police.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I would like to request at this time that we open up item one, two, because we'll be basically discussing both issues when it comes to salaries and pay increases and adjusting the starting salary for an officer.
We good with that, Council? Yeah, that works.
Well, as we all currently know, that we are in a critical spot right now. We have three officers working patrol. We'll have two officers working patrol starting next month, we'll have another officer out. We have an officer out on medical leave, so that keeps him out of being able to go out of patrol. We've had two spots open now for over a year, and now, of course, we have three spots open. We've had a few applicants turn in their application, we weeded out several of them because they were just not good for the town. The last one that we processed through the background was good, we were going to send him to get his physical and drug testing, so we can offer him a job. He didn't show up to that appointment, we made, Assistant Chief made contact with him to see what happened, and he frankly said Bartonville paid him more than what we were going to pay him. So, lost that officer to Bartonville. The current rate that we have is 57,000 for an officer starting off. I don't have a pay range to say, "Well, we can offer you this much because you have so much experience." So, it makes it harder for us to recruit with the current 57,000. And the current 750,000 is based on an 84-hour work week. So, in actuality, the 80, on an 80-hour work week, our officers are making 54, 54 a year. So, on this first one, I want to ask the Council, and I'll show some salary survey here in a second, is letting me, if the Council approves, to give me a range, so we can put it out there and at least be compatible to get somebody out there with everybody else, correct? The, right now, nobody's coming. I have one officer that I'm talking to, and he's interested, but he's not interested at the rate that we have. I told him, "Well, go ahead and submit your background package, so we can start, just in case the Council decides to adjust the pay, then you might consider joining us." But get your package in right now, because it takes two, one, two, three months to do a background check, depending on their background. So, delaying this for another week is just another week we have to wait. And he said he would, he turned in his package, so we'll see what happens tonight, and we'll go from there. While they get that done, so we have lost, of course, two officers in the line of duty, basically, right, to COVID, and one officer moved on from this department to go make more money with the constable's office. Officer Wyman worked with us, was with us 15, 16 years. So, we lost a 15, 16-year officer for another maybe $5,000, whatever it was. We invested a lot in Officer Wyman, training him, and so forth. It takes a lot to train an officer and keep him going every year, and it takes money to hire somebody new. So, it cost us by losing Wyman, and I talked to him, and he said, "They got the same benefits that we do when it comes to insurance, and his family has the same benefits. He gets a take-home car, he's off on the weekends, and he's making more money." So, I don't blame him for going somewhere else. Recruiting officers now is more difficult than it has ever been. There are less people wanting to do this job for various reasons. Y'all see media, and how they talk about police and blaming police for this and that. So, it's difficult. Right now, there's such a demand in, not just Texas, but all across the country, for officers. Nobody really wants to come do this, especially when, like, what we have, other officers here, "What's going on in Double Oak? What do y'all got? Y'all don't have no supporter from your town or council?" Because they hear what some citizens make comments of, "No raises for the police department, make them pay more out of pocket." Our citizens and council expect the same level of service as Lewisville, Denton, and so forth, but we pay the lowest in Denton County. I was asked how we recruit officers. The major thing in having good benefits and paying a fair salary, currently, our salary is at the bottom of the pay, so if we want to recruit officers, I'm sorry, we have to compete with the other agencies. I hear, "Hey, you can't compare us to Lewisville, you can't compare us to Denton." It's true, you can't compare us in size, and businesses, and population, but we have to compare salaries, and we have to compete with these bigger agencies. When they're paying more, and they're paying about the same in benefits, what makes an officer want to come here to Double Oak? If I ask anybody, if you have the opportunity to make 10,000 more somewhere and get the same benefits and go work in Flower Mound or Double Oak, I think everybody would choose, you know, making the more money. Not only that, in Double Oak, we're small, and we don't have more officers on the street like Flower Mound or other agencies. The officers are safer in those towns, because they have backup right then and there. Our officers work on their own right now, and backup is whenever it shows up. If Flower Mound is busy, then they can't come, but they would send somebody who's available. So, safety is a thing that officer has to take into consideration. I'm going to be working out there by myself with no backup. We don't arrest anybody without having a cover officer, we don't respond to family violences or critical incidents with one officer. We have to have two officers, just for the officer's safety. You know, people talk about being, "Nothing happens in Double Oak." That's why you should take the pay that we give you. But that's not necessary, too. We brought it up, we had a kidnapping, if it wasn't for the officer working night shift and coming around the corner, if that officer wasn't there, who knows what might have happened? We had a kidnapping before that, and we, of course, along with other agencies, we handled that call and recovered that citizen safely. Had a drugged-out guy from Lewisville steals a car, driving through Double Oak, runs out of gas, he's high, breaks the window of the home, goes inside, our citizen's taking a shower, she hears what's going on, she comes out, and there's the guy right there. We were only three blocks, we happened to be three blocks down the street taking care of another car. By the time we arrived, we didn't know, nobody saw him, but he had already gone, but we had that house surrounded, make sure that he didn't come out in any way, but it took several officers to contain the scene and still be able to go on other calls in case something comes up. That's when we were kind of on full staff, we still had plenty of officers out there. We eventually found him down the road, and he was taken to jail. We have so many instances that police are needed, medical, when somebody's having a heart attack and they need CPR right then and there, if we're not here, we're the first ones, we're about five minutes, less than five minutes from a citizen's home if we're in town. Those minutes are critical when it comes to providing medical attention. I know the fire department will eventually respond, because they have to get toned out, and they have to get in their cars, they have to drive up here and get the equipment and head down to wherever that call may be. So, it's important that we are there to make sure that we provide the service that we need to, to our citizens. There's so many instances, like I said, shootings, we've had shootings and family violence situations, two that I can think of, the shot at their significant other, good thing they weren't hit, one was great, but we were there to take care of it. Currently, we have to go on call. Right now, there's not an officer 24 hours a day. We have to rely on the county to come out if there's an issue, and if it's a big issue, then somebody, myself, Assistant Chief, or Officer Cody Longwebber, will respond from home and take care of that issue then. But right now, we don't have anybody 24 hours. I'm not going to discuss what hours we're working and so forth, just for safety purposes, but it's just unacceptable, and I'm about to show you the salaries, just so you can see what, where we're at.
Second screen.
No, connect to wireless.
Thank you.
Will you come up to him? Sorry, will you come up to him like just a second?
Jerome Hannah, 250 Ridgeboro Lane. You said, "Starting at 57K, it's 7,000, for 84 hours? Are we requiring our officers to work 84 hours a week?"
Pay period, two weeks. Yes, sir. Sorry. That's a lot.
They don't get to sleep.
Thank you.
One of the things that was asked is that, hey, Bartonville, they have 20, well, they recently got 24-hour coverage. There's six officers over there. The difference in Bartonville and us is when one of their officers is out, training, sick, vacation, and so forth, they're not 24 hours. We, if we have a full staff, and we have an officer go to training, sick, or whatever, we still able to operate and fill that gap of that officer. So, Bartonville doesn't have that luxury. Bartonville doesn't have a detective. Currently, their officers are the ones that have to follow up on the cases and handle it that way. Well, if they're handling cases, they're not patrolling. If they're not patrolling, if they're patrolling, then they're not doing their cases. Here, we have the luxury, we have a detective that does that 24, not 24, eight hours a day, 10 hours a day, whatever it is, and we are able, unlike other towns, with having a detective, dig deeper into an offense when it occurs in Double Oak. Identity theft, that's a big one. Other cities, they just push it to the side, they're not going to mess with it. Here in Double Oak, we investigate them, and we go as far as we can. Even if we find them in another state, we prepare the package, the detective prepares the package, contacts the detective in whatever state that is, the city, hands them a package, say, "Here you go, please handle it," and we're successful with that. But other cities do not do it. So, one of the things here on the screen is a salary survey that was done by Little Elm, and here recently, in the last few weeks, I've had to update some of this information, just because Aubrey had information from, I mean, Little Elm had information from 2019, some agencies updated, sent them the updated information when it comes to salaries and benefits. So, I've updated this several times, and as you can see, Double Oak difference compared to everybody else here on the list, we're starting pay, we're 9,339, just to be the median or average, and this is based on an 80-hour work week. So, our officers, starting officers at 57 is not the true number. The true number, based on 80, is 54,412. Makes us, puts us down at the bottom four when it comes to cities in Denton County. So, like I said, it's hard to compare us to other cities, but we have to provide the same level of service, and we have to be compatible with other agencies and pay reasonable salaries. I mean, my officers can't afford to live here, I don't know what the, I looked up, and the median salary in Double Oak is higher than anybody else in Denton County, including Flower Mound per capita. You can't make a living off of 54,000, especially if it's just one person living, you can't make a living off of that. So, I think it's important that we at least try to get to a median point where, hey, at least we have an average chance of getting or recruiting officers, recruiting when one of their officers is out, training, sick, vacation and so forth, they're not twenty-four hours. We, if we have a, a full staff and we have an officer go to training, sick or whatever, we still able to operate and fill that gap of that officer. Uh, so Bartonville doesn't have that luxury. Bartonville doesn't have a detective. Currently, their officers are the ones that have to follow up on the cases and handle it that way. Well, if they're handling cases, they're not, they're not patrolling. If they're, not patrolling, if they're patrolling, then they're not doing their cases. Here, we have the luxury. We have a, a detective that does that twenty-four, not twenty-four, eight hours a day, ten hours a day, whatever it is. And we are able, unlike other towns, with having a detective, dig deeper into an offense when it occurs, occurs in Double Oak. Identity theft, that's a big one. Other cities, they just push it to the side, they're not gonna mess with it. Here in Double Oak, we investigate them and we go as far as we can. Even if we find them in another state, we prepare the package, the detective prepares the package, contacts the detective in whatever state that is, the city, hands them a package, say, here you go, please handle it. And we're successful with that. But other cities do, do not do it. So, one of the things here on the, uh, screen is a salary survey that was done by Little Elm. And here recently, in the last few weeks, I've had to update, uh, some of this, uh, information just because, uh, Aubrey had information from tw- I mean, uh, Little Elm had information from twenty nineteen. Some agencies updated, sent them the updated information when it comes to salaries and benefits. So, I've updated this, uh, several times. And as you can see, Double Oak difference compared to everybody else here on the list, we're starting pay, we're nine thousand three hundred and thirty-nine, just to be the median or average. And this is based on an eighty-hour work week. So, our officers, starting officers at fifty-seven is not the true number. The true number, based on eighty, is fifty-four thousand four hundred and twelve. Makes us, puts us down at the bottom four when it comes to, uh, uh, cities, uh, in Denton County. So, like I said, it's hard to compare us to other cities, uh, but we have to provide the same number, level of service and we have to be compat- uh, compa- compatible with other agencies and pay reasonable salaries. I mean, uh, one, my officers can't afford to live here. I don't know what the, I, I looked up and the median salary in Double Oak is higher than anybody else in, in Denton County, including Flower Mound per capita. You can't make a living off of fifty-four thousand, especially if it's just one person living, you can't make a living off of that. So, I think it's important that we at least try to get to, um, a median point where, hey, at least we have an average chance of getting or recruiting officers, uh, recruiting officers and getting them in here and keeping them here by letting them know that, hey, you're supported by the town and so forth. Uh, insurance was discussed last week, uh, about, hey, you know, we provide a hundred percent and seventy-five percent for the family. It's unheard of. This is not a business or corporate world, this is municipality. And as you can see on the right, uh, a majority pays for a hundred percent of the employee's benefits and the family, uh, it, it varies, right? It varies from thirty up to ninety percent. Now, you look, I mean, I know the other towns are bigger. Not only do they get paid a whole lot more than we do, but they have good insurance, just the same as us. So, it goes back to, why does somebody want to come work here when they have an opportunity to go there? Uh, I have done some numbers here. To ask this council, uh, propose salary, and, and this is just my proposal and, and of course, we're here to discuss and take action on this. So, we go back to our current salary, starting in fifty-four, four, one, two, based on an eighty-hour work week. They have to work a hundred and four hours more a year to make fifty-seven, one thirty-five. So, we're still having to work more than, uh, some of these other agencies just to make a little bit of money. But we have one officer, uh, making fifty-four, nine eighty-one, has six years of experience, uh, has been with Double Oak, two years and eleven months. Our second officer has, uh, making sixty-one thousand eight hundred and eighty, has thirteen years of experience, uh, been with Double Oak, seven years. Our third officer is making fifty-eight thousand, ninety-nine with thirteen years' experience. Our, uh, sergeant detective has paid sixty-eight, nine seventy-two, twenty years' experience. We want to retain the officers we have. We have a lot of experience in here. Of course, we have one new one, but we have thirteen, twenty-seven. Uh, Assistant Chief Gaines has twenty, twenty, thirty, thirty. I'm going on twenty-three, twenty-four. We need to retain who we have and be able to find other officers to come here at a, at a pay that will work for them and the town. The percentage difference of my proposal is thirteen percent increase of fifty-four, uh, thousand four hundred and twelve, current starting salary, to be at sixty-two. So, I am asking that the council look at this, take this into the cur- uh, consideration and see the, the impact that we have right now. We don't have officers out there and we're in serious critical condition right now. I would like to ask this council to let me have that spread flexibility to offer somebody else this much money for their experience. Me and Patrick did talk, uh, two, three weeks ago. Time just goes by quick. We did discuss the situation and Patrick wanted to get to, with me later on and prepare a, a comprehensive package, uh, to present to the council. Uh, I felt it was important to, to start talking about it now and present this to the council, because I don't know how long it's gonna take us to get a comprehensive package, uh, together. The only thing that I believe that we need to look at is the salary itself. When you look at insurance, benefits for us and other agencies, it's comparable. Uh, we're, we're good. When you look at our, um, incentive pay when it comes to, uh, education and the certification and, and and as a peace officer, we have that. Uh, some are higher than others, but the salary is the one that we need to focus on. So, of course, I'm asking, uh, to, for approval for, uh, for fifty-seven to sixty-two thousand dollar a year range pay for, uh, recruitment and officers. And I've had, I was asked if we have a step plan in place. We don't. We do, we've never had a step plan, plan in place. It's, uh, it, it is in other towns. So, we can, also the town knows and the citizens know and officers know, hey, you start off at this much and after so many years, you make this much and this much and it goes up. Uh, and you can see here, the, uh, what I'm proposing, uh, not set in stone, of course, uh, because I know this is a big number. When you look at it, you're like, wow, that's, that's a lot of money. Uh, but how else am I gonna get anybody and keep them safe if I'm not compatible with every other town? Uh, of course, a new officer would possibly start at sixty-two thousand, uh, with us. But we also would need to increase the salary of the current officers we have because it's not gonna be fair to start, uh, a new officer with four years of experience at seventy-one thousand and I have officers that are only making sixty thousand and they've been here for years. So, you, you have to adjust their salaries as well because otherwise, they're gonna leave. They're like, wow, I just, I've been here this many years and he's making more than I do, right? So, this is a, a breakdown of, you know, uh, first year, they make five point eight, eight percent and then it goes up three percent, three percent up to, uh, the sixth. The maximum salary for, uh, for an officer is seventy-three thousand seven hundred and thirty-two. Based on a eighty-four hour pay period, of course, it seems higher because they're having to work more for it. It's sixty-five, uh, up to seventy-seven, uh, four nineteen. Uh, those are the numbers that I've, uh, proposing to the council and I would like to, um, get input from council on their recommendations and what they think is appropriate and see what we can do.
Thank you, Chief. And I did want to clarify a point. The reason why we didn't take action tonight is because we haven't seen what you were bringing to the table. We do expect to take action quickly after the council has done enough thorough conversation about that. So, we're not trying to leave it out. What we want to do is understand it before we just make a jump to a decision.
I'd like to comment on that because there's a lot of items that come up for discussion, consideration and action. And the way that this was communicated last week was through Chief Rivas and Assistant Chief Gaines saying, here's what we proposed to put on the agenda for next week, what we would like to discuss. And it included discussion, consideration and action, and they provided that to the entire town council. So, we thought tonight we would be at least having the option to take action. The council always has the right to say, we're not going to take action during this meeting. But I was surprised when the agenda came out and there was no action item on one and two. So, I did ask who made the change because it was communicated previously in the week.
I did.
Yeah. So, I, I'll say, I, I'm disappointed. I know that's what Anita was getting to. I'm disappointed because it even said it had a point about emergency action because we can't hire right now. We haven't been able to hire. I'm just saying, I was disappointed. I think council should have the option, but I understand that you removed it and we couldn't change anything after the time deadline. Just want that out there.
Yeah, I, I think one observation since I've been attending the council meetings over the past six, seven months is the fact that we seem to rush into things without doing the proper due diligence. And this is very important. This is ve- this is a large ask, which, by the way, we think is important. The officers, from the conversations that we have had, uh, Chief Rivas, to the re- the information that you have shared with me, we know there's a problem. Wha- what's an even bigger problem that we're really not gonna address because it's not important is that here we are in this budget session, addressing this, when this should have been addressed in years previous to keep us competitive in the marketplace.
Right, and that was, uh, the purpose for the last council, previous council. Uh, I know citizens have made comments about, wow, nine percent in, percent raise? That's just unheard of also. But we, in, in all these years, we've always been behind, uh, everybody else. And we've, the town never adjusted small increments amounts to catch up to that. So, now, we're having a, wow, now you get hit with the whole thing.
Correct.
Not the police department's fault. Uh, i- i- it's just, they didn't think of it or, for whatever reason, they didn't raise the salaries accordingly.
Right, right. So, so, so the nine point five, we tried with the nine point five. We knew it wasn't enough. We knew we were only gonna le- leave you at the bottom of the median, but that was before everyone else got their pay raises, right?
Yes.
So, we knew that. Uh, we got a, a gaggle of angry citizens that said, nine point five percent, that never ha- that's false. It's happened to me three times in my career where I've gotten double digits, out of cycle, labor correction pay raises. It happens, even in the corporate world. So, don't say it doesn't happen, okay? Get tired of that.
In Argyle, we got a nine percent and they got a twelve percent.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Exactly.
So, you know, it's like, yeah, we never catch up.
So, so, the point is, we had an action on here and one person decided to take action for the whole council and remove it. We're just five people in the council. Five, not one. If we don't want to take action, we don't take action. Cool. But that's our decision. You make the decision for us, you've hamstringed us and you've set the town up again for another round of no, no, inability to hire police officers, and that is unacceptable.
I have a question. New to council. Um, when does council give you the impact, uh, the advice on setting the range? Like, in the time that I've been coming to the council meetings too, you come forward and you say you have a candidate and you give us a, a summary. It happened in March, it happened in April. We heard about potential hire in this August. But never on a council meeting that I have heard th- that the range was set by council. Isn't that one of your decisions?
Right. There, there's never been a range. Uh, right now, it's because we're at a critical point and we can't get anybody. So, now, I have to come before the council and ask, hey, we need a range, uh, to be able to do this. We didn't, we didn't have those issues a few years ago. We were able to get, uh, applicants in and so forth, but now we're not getting anyone, you know?
But this fifty-seven thousand, that's set by council?
That was set by the budget, by the budget last year.
So, that's the starting, uh, uh, that's the starting rate for, for a new off- for an officer.
So, when we set the-
There's no wiggle room.
So, when we set the salary budget, we're setting a starting range?
Yes. So, what we did is we took the salaries, yeah, that's, because you took, ticked the salaries and you increased them a percentage. And so, that took that starting salary that it had been and we raised it nine, nine and a half, whatever, I think it was nine, but, yeah.
There is, honestly, there is no set salary because the town gives me a budget of this much. So, it's not set, this officer gets this, this officer gets that. Uh, if we were, last year, we were at fifty-six thousand one hundred. Because we lost experienced officers and two officers, that left me, uh, some wiggle room to adjust something. What I did was, I wanted to keep the officers we had, so the money that I had to work with, I gave it to the officers. The ones with more experience got a little bit more, ones with less experience got less. That was for the purpose, hey, I need to show them, we're, we're, we're doing something. I know we lost these guys, but I need your help. Please stay, don't go. That's the purpose. So, there is no really set, uh, amount. I can't go past this set amount because the money's not there. If it was there, then I could offer more.
So, the fully staffed amount is that budgeted line item that we have.
And that's for a step of how many officers, patrol officers?
That's six patrol officers.
That's six.
Yes, ma'am.
Now, what avenues have you used for recruitment?
Recruitment? Well, it's not much we can do. Uh, we go to TML website, we advertise our openings there. Uh, we also, there's a, uh, email, list email that goes around to, um, several agencies and every agency puts, if they have openings, they put it in there, but we threw ours in there so everybody's aware. Uh, we've, of course, Facebook and our website, uh, and also on other websites that, uh, where off, duty officers work. We posted it out there trying to get those, like, guys, hey, come work with us. Uh, that's what we're doing right now. Word of mouth is also, uh, being the best for us, uh, or officers that, the current officers work with off duty, they get to know these other officers off duty, they see that they're good guys and so forth, they try to recruit them to come work with us.
Are these similar strategies to other chiefs in our nearby communities?
Oh, of course, other bigger departments, they have the luxury of, uh, putting up on billboards, putting the signs, hey, come join our team outside on the highway with the, the boards and so forth. And they just do the same thing we do. They put it on TML, they put it on the website and so forth. The, the thing is, everybody, I've attended chief's meetings and everybody's in the same boat we are. But everybody is raising their rates to be able to take officers from over here to go over there. That's the only way, unfortunately, is we have to pay enough for the officer to come here and work.
And as far as retention goes, your seven-year officers, why did they stay?
Well, most of them started here. It was a good department. They liked the benefits that we had. Of course, they knew that the, uh, pay was great, not that great, but, hey, i- i- the insurance was good and they liked the family feeling, they know us and so forth. Unlike you go work at a bigger department, you get lost in the system and they don't have that family, uh, bond that we do. That's why they stay here. Uh, they're dedicated to serving the citizens of Double Oak and like the citizens here. So, that's one of the reasons they stay.
Is it also a pitch when you're recruiting?
We do. Uh, right now, of course, with, with, uh, just by other county agencies and officers talking about, hey, Double Oak, I mean, it's out there, right? Double Oak is not paying enough and it seems, right, everybody talks that there's not support for the PD. So, there's a like, well, why would I want to go work there?
I'm just wondering where the vibe, where the lack of support for the PD comes from.
The lack of support?
Mm-hmm.
From, we don't want to give them a raise, that's where it's coming from.
This is just coming to budget discussion now and haven't had-
It comes from what they've heard, that's in the paper, uh, everything that, with the COVID money that was given out, uh, the comments have been said, hey, no raises, y'all get paid too much.
Yep. A lot of it came from also last year during the budget process where, you know, we tried to bring, like I said, slightly intermediate and, and everyone, everybody stood up and said, we love our PD, but, right, they shouldn't be paid what they're worth. Right? You get two benefits for working at Double Oak. Good health insurance and low salary. I mean, those are your two benefits and, and we're doing our best to, to make sure that we keep those two benefits for you. I want to echo some of the things you said earlier. The, uh, the calls are critical, the medical calls. We can't go on scene for domestic abuse, for suicide attempts, for drug overdoses or any of those other things that require critical time, sensitive intervention until PD gets there first. And they're not gonna come until there's two officers because it's a high-risk incident for them also. So, we stage and we have to wait for PD to clear the scenes. If you're one of those unfortunate people and I've, and, and you think it doesn't happen in Double Oak, I'll get, tell you right now, you're wrong. It happens a lot. Our number, we, I, I've, I can't even count the number of suicide attempts I've been on. Drug overdoses, uh, it surprises me. You, you think that the, the affluent, um, neighborhoods of Double Oak, but money just gives them more possibilities and opportunities is really what it's coming down to. So many times, we just sit there and, and we're ready to go, but we gotta wait. And, 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 and it's frustrating for us, um, especially since we know that the, the seconds are ticking on us. And we're waiting on PD. So, it's, it's, it's absolutely critical that we have our twenty-four hour support and we have enough personnel to, to do what we need to do. So, I, I kind of want to echo that and make sure that the people understood that it's not just about one break-in once in a while. There's a lot of other things that go on here. Don't forget the, the guy that went down the, the ditches and broken everybody's, um, caught him, right? Broken in everybody's sheds, caught those guys. I, I don't know if there's been one that we haven't caught, some major crime scenes that, that, that we haven't caught.
Been pretty successful.
Yeah. So, so, I mean, great, great PD, um, well worth, you know, keeping it the way it is. We, we, we have, we have fantastic people. I, I'm- I, I remember some of the older people, and they're sleepy, you know, the guy that got fired for shooting snakes in people's yards. I mean, that's not the people we want here. That's not the people we want. We want, we want the quality people. We want, we want to keep the Wyman's. We want the Cogies, we want, you know, unfortunately, Sneed, uh, he was one of my favorites, right? So-
Love night shift.
Yeah, yeah.
Didn't want to get off night shift.
So, so I just kind of want to echo some of the things that you said, because it is, it is critical that we have that support. Um, if, if you're, if you're waiting, especially if you're, uh, getting beat up by your spouse, um, and you're waiting for somebody from the sheriff's department to come, it's, it's going to be a long wait.
Chief, would it be possible for you to put the first spreadsheet back up and then toggle between the bottom of this worksheet?
You want to do what?
Yeah, and just, just slide back over. So, we can see the cities and the towns and where we're at.
I don't know if Assistant Chief Gaines has any input to add to this or not, but I'd like to invite her to say something if she'd like.
Please.
One of the things that you, these people need to understand as well is every one of our officers that are working the streets right now work off-duty on their days off, just to make ends meet right now.
I would also add, I heard on the, um, national news tonight, and I just looked it up. Um, the average U.S. starting salary for a teacher is sixty-one thousand, seven hundred and thirty dollars. Now, there's a shortage of teachers, so schools all over the country are having to pay up, just like police departments are having to pay up. There are shortages in a lot of the professions. Um, I'm a retired teacher, among other things, with a interregnum at IBM, so I got a view of the corporate world. You get what you pay for. So, if you want talent, you got to pay for it. If you want to keep it, you got to pay for it. In Double Oak, my perception, since I've lived here, is, is that we value our police and the security. Out front, we got blue ribbons, you know, back to blue. That's what that means. At least I thought it did. So, let's walk the talk. Let's support our police. Let's give our chief what it takes to do the job, to hire the talent, to keep us safe. Let's let the crime go somewhere else.
Thank you, Jean. So, if you toggle back over to the other worksheet.
You mean the word document?
Your ask, your ask. There you go. And I think you got to slide down to the bottom, I believe. There we go. So, your scale starts at sixty-five, one, and goes to seventy-seven, four, nineteen. For the, the citizens that are here in the room and, I believe, online, um, if you could just slowly move that from this and then show the other screen, so they can do a little bit of a contrast and compare. We're seeing this for the first time this evening, which, which is what I've been excited to see.
Yes, sir.
Is, is, so we can see where your ask places our police officers in comparison with the other towns.
Right.
So, go ahead, I think you're going to say what I was going to say.
The asking is, it, it puts us up there to, um,
We scroll back to the left.
Towards the middle, little bit closer towards the middle, uh, you want to, what?
Just to the left, so we can see the, the salary with the cities over there?
They'll find a sixty-five.
Well, that's what I was going to say. So, you have to look at, this is on an eighty-hour pay scale, and the sixty-five is an eighty-four. So, that's why he gave you both, and the sixty-two, he said, was on the eighty hours. So, he's done the math for you. So, it's really-
So, you're in line with North Lake, Aubrey, Krugerville, is that Denton County Sheriff's Department, something like that?
If we raised it to sixty-two down there.
Yeah, based upon your ask.
Yeah. Looks like we'd be closer to the middle of the pack.
And that is for the starting pay, and then, uh, could you toggle back to your, uh, you had the, the more experienced rate then? There you go.
On, on the spreadsheet, uh, Chief Rivas, um, on the max pay, was that max pay starting or max pay for all patrol officers?
Uh, that's a max pay would be for all patrol officers.
Okay, no matter experience, okay, all right.
So, our ma- so, what you're showing here, and I don't want to interpret that this is max pay, is seventy-three?
The blue.
And so, when they, when they hit the maximum of the pay scale-
Thank you, Scott. That's good.
Then what's your solution? Do you do what other departments do in a lump sum?
They, what they, what you're talking about is when they get to the maximum.
Sure.
So, once they get to the maximum, uh, they usually give them cost of living pay after that.
So, the annual budget, when we, when the council sets the budget and you do your, like, increases, that it will increase the max as well as a cost of living adjustment?
Yeah, I've seen so, some departments say, there's no raise anymore, it is two thousand. Thank you very much for your service. I mean, my husband sees that with his company. He's at the top of the scale, so it's a lump sum. Is that what you're proposing?
Oh, yes. Yeah, once she, I don't know.
Well, no, 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 I don't think you're proposing that. No, you're not.
What are you talking about?
Compared to cost of living is what she's saying, I think.
Yeah, I've seen it as when officers hit the top of the pay scale, then there's no longer a one-point-five percent or a two-point-five percent cumulative on the salary. It is a two thousand.
It's a cost of living, whatever.
So, you're, continue with the percent increase?
Correct.
You would also be looking at a market study further down the line as well. So, if you're not, you're still going to have to up your salaries with the market.
That is correct.
And this is base, because our officers do get longevity, they get incentive, they get overtime, which does accumulate pretty nicely when you're going time and a half.
And that is-
Just not losing sight of it.
For every other agency, incentives that they give as well.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
And just Barnville, they're, they're, he's allowed to give a range of fifty-seven to seventy thousand to get officers in there, so.
And that's, that would be, I'm assuming, be for experience, right?
For their experience, yes.
Yeah.
So, have you looked at, because right now, police department budget salaries, or police department budget is forty-nine percent of our total budget for the town. How do you, how does your proposal change? Like, what's the incremental cost in your proposal? Because we're looking at budget, so.
So, what he provided you is the thirteen percent proposal. Um, I think we would have to look at how that gets put into the-
Do you multiply by thirteen percent, one-point-one-three?
No, not the full line item, just the salaries. Keep in mind, you're talking about, like, when you say it's forty-nine percent or whatever, that's the entire police section you're talking about, right? Or did you just take this out?
It'd be a stepped increase. So, you would say, you need three new officers, right? So, I'd budget the sixty-five, one hundred for them. I'd actually put their salaries in. Um, how many you got it? Two, you know, three years, four years, five years plus, put their, plug those numbers in from one through six, and tell us what that, that total ends up being. Uh, if you try to do a blanket thirteen percent, that's, no, that's going to skew it way off.
Especially, but you still have to, yeah.
Yeah.
I, and honestly, since I'm not normally treasurer, I'm just helping. Be careful, help. Um, I, I don't know for the lump sum that's in there if that's, I assume that's on the eighty-four hour rates? Okay, that's, it has to be to get to our budget, so, okay.
Well, we have to know that number too, to the increase now.
Oh, I totally agree, but it's something that has to be calculated.
Right, right. Which, making an action item without a calculation is, I don't, I didn't come up here to sign off on just everything, not knowing numbers. Um, and we have twenty percent of our town is on fixed income. So, even though the, the, you might say the stat of wage earnings in our town is pretty high up there or so, but we have twenty percent of the town is on fixed income, so we have to be conscientious of those in our community that are going to pay the taxes, just making that known, because the comment was made.
So, along those lines, again, we're going to go back to say, there's five of us here. We are all adults. We cannot take the action if we don't understand the implications on the budget. That should be on our shoulders, not on one person's. As far as the fixed income, I would really like to say what the proposed difference in the budget would be. Divide that by twelve hundred and divide that by twelve, and that's the impact per resident. And, uh, it's going to be in the sense, so.
I, I would like to-
Doctor Manassia said at the beginning, the part Double Oak pays is, I, I brought out my property taxes. Mine was, just about ten percent of our property taxes goes to this town. Everything else is the, is the, is the school board and the county. And the school board takes the lion's share. Sorry, Jean, go ahead.
No, I just would like to add that, I, I made a comment at a recent meeting about actuaries. And one of the thing that feeds into a homeowner's rate on home insurance and other items that are insured is the crime rate in the community. Having a low crime rate makes a difference in those tax, in those insurance rates. So, if, for whatever reason, we don't have the coverage that we have been accustomed to, and our crime rate goes up, we're going to end up paying for it anyhow. It's not going to be in our taxes, it's going to be in our insurance rates. And we all know that once they go up, it's just really, really, really hard to get them to go back down. Like, do they ever really? Um, so, just wanted to share that, because I'm, as a new council member, trying to do due diligence and look at the big picture and look at the big impacts. Um, and I just thought that was an interesting little tidbit that I came across. So, I'm sharing that for what it's worth.
I would like to address, since it's come up twice, um, the mayor, or in this case, without a mayor, the mayor pro tem does set the agenda for the meeting. And the, the mayor pro tem in this case took the action out of, um, the agenda item. Because this town needs to see the chief's ask. Now, this sets up, once the town sees this, they have the ability to come back in, ask questions, have public comments specific to this agenda item, so that we can take the appropriate action. And what I would like that appropriate action to be, although that, this, this is now an opinion, would be that this council, council listens to the chief, listens to the citizens, and then comes back here and votes in what I believe could be a unanimous vote to take care of our officers of this town. I believe if we would have done this tonight, it would have been a split council as it is right now, and people would go away with hurt feelings one way or the other. There's a way that we can do this right, and that's why no action was taken tonight. I am not apologizing or justifying my actions. I have the right to set the agenda, and I do look forward to taking these numbers, working them. I appreciate the work that you've done with this, chief. This is very good. I'm excited. Now, we have something to work with that we can take and contrast and compare and figure out what the right thing to do is for our officers. We cannot, we as this current town council cannot do anything with the sins of the past, but we can make everything as best as we can, and I really appreciate the work that you've done here. You now give me a great opportunity to get in here and totally understand it, so we can make the right presentation, make the ask, make the why happen here, so the town citizens can get the buy-in. Is there any further discussion on these two items, Town Council?
So, I would have a, I do have a question for you, Mayor Pro Tem. Um, so, you said you didn't want to take action tonight because you wanted time for more discussion and digging into. So, what is your plan then?
Uh, I would, excuse me, the, um, this would be one of the, what I'd like to do is, as we go through the budget workshop, you've given us direction here, we can plug these numbers into the workshop tonight to see how it impacts the overall budget, which I think is real important. And then, from there, we can basically take that, and once we see how it impacts the whole budget. Personally, to me, if, if the numbers flow the way I think they could, probably not going to be a lot of discussion, it's more action at the September sixth Town Council meeting.
I do have one question for you, chief. So, you've got a candidate, and you're entertaining, possibly making him an offer, so it's, it's a conversation. So, I would think you have latitude in your negotiation to try to entice this recruit to come aboard. Or do you see yourself being stuck behind the council approving the hire at a pay rate that you know already is not sufficient?
Right. So, this officer is waiting to see what is going to happen, if the council is going to adjust salaries, uh, to be compatible. Uh, I told him, I don't know, it's not up to me, it's, the decision hasn't been made, but the possibility that it will happen. So, it's open right now.
And I'd like to make a comment on that. So, my thinking is, um, he has latitude right now to kind of play with that salary because he's not fully staffed. If he is fully staffed at the current budgeted rates, then he's going to have to drop that officer's salary after hiring him or do something else to make it work. So, I do understand why he feels hamstrung, because the only reason he has latitude is because we haven't been able to hire. So, if we, if we don't come up to meet that amount that he's talking about, like, if he were to hire somebody at a rate, and we don't come up to meet that, he could be in trouble, budget-wise.
And granted that, but right now, I mean, you're down three officers, the salaries for the two that we didn't even get hired last year are still untapped. So, I would say you have the latitude to entice him to hire an offer that has been struggling for many months now on adding one more to your force. This conversation of adding to the budget for next year can still be had. I mean, we can still look at the increase of the budget, but in my opinion, I don't see you being hamstrung.
You're missing, you're missing the point. He doesn't have a pay range currently. The way the sal, the way the budget set is, is it's this. He's asking for, for steps as we look at the budget for next year with the increases. Do I have that correct, chief? So, say the person he's looking at with this interest, it has seven years of experience, which would take him into the top of that proposed step. Right now, today, he doesn't have the leeway, even though, yes, there's money sitting there in the budget, to offer this person candidate more, because as Casey just said, that, that person could make that money until October first, when the new budget year starts, and then, then he's on the skids. So, what do you do? Say, well, gee, sorry, the council didn't fund it, so, you know, I apologize. It's like, no, you need to know when you hire, for the person you're hiring, that they know what to expect.
Additionally, you have officers who would be making less, and they've been here for a long time. So, to go out and try and hire a new person at a, at a higher rate is a really, is a real slap in the face to your current officers that have been committed.
I'm, and I'm not trying, trying to tell him how to do his job. I mean, if we've got one on, on the hook to see if you can entice them to, um, come here, I mean, and the fifty-seven whatever isn't meeting it, I don't understand with the excess in the budget why they can't make that offer, because you're only talking about one.
Because you won't have the excess next year.
And you might lose the officers that make less than that. So, then you, you just shot yourself in the foot.
So, chief, I, like I said, I think your, the scale that you set up here is very good. But I am concerned about the officers we currently have. I would like to see where they lie, not, not necessarily for this discussion right now, but if you could share with me after, I'd like to see where they lie within this scale, because I think that's very important. These are good topics, they're good points to brought up, because, yeah, you, it's one thing to go get new, it's the other thing to take care of the, the, what you've got. And, and the impact here could change your scale a little bit up, maybe down, I doubt it. So, I want to make sure that we're doing the, the equitable thing here as we work through this. And, and that's why I don't want to just race to something to throw a number in. But tonight, we can plug some numbers in, and, and maybe even during our workshop, you could kind of give us some direction on-
Yes, sir.
On what that overall number could be, because I do want to see it. And, and if it all fits and it, and it works, and, and we look at other areas, and if we have to make some adjustments or cuts in order to, to handle this, this council should do everything possible to make us more competitive. Um, this isn't really about defunding the police, it's about funding the police. And we want to do everything we can to do, to get our officer pay in a competitive state with not just the ones around us, but the ones that want to come pill- in a competitive state with not just the ones around us, but the ones that want to come puffer from us. Can we go to the high end? No, we cannot do that, we know that. I think there isn't anybody here, but we've got to be real about this. And, and, and that's why I think it's important that we just have to crunch a little, few more numbers. And, and I do believe, unless something is crazy, that, that action will be simple on the next meeting.
Yes, sir.
Can I say something?
Yeah, absolutely.
And this doesn't necessarily mean, and, and I know he's got it written up there, new officer, one year experience, two year. You're, if you're looking at a, say, a step scale, that does, that new officer may actually have three, three years' experience. So.
They could, I'm assuming they're going to fall in line somewhere in there, not just be the first.
The ones with the lesser may, may start at the sixty-two. But then it would be stepping up. Now, if I had a thirteen-year officer step in today, then we would offer him more money, for sure.
And that's what I would like also for you to do, is do a little bit of modeling or what-if on here, that if we were able to, or had to, you know, what could that mix be? Because you're not going to get everybody at, at step one.
Right, and what Bartonville has done, I talked to him today, is they just said everybody, he's got a budget of seventy. He's got wiggle room, whatever they don't use up, they don't use up, but that's how they work theirs.
For the new hires?
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, I just, I want to make sure that, that, we have not balance per se, but we've got to make sure that we don't run some people off, because somebody got something that they should have got. And we can't do anything about the past, all right? And what someone was paid, or what they negotiated in. This is the most difficult thing about hiring individuals, is usually you're hiring somebody in at a little bit higher rate than someone was hired in, you know, that's now been here three or four years. It's just, it's the times, it's the economics. But I want to make sure that, that we have a really good picture of what not just new is, but how do we take care of current?
Yes, sir.
I think the other thing we have to look at is recruitment. How do we make Double Oak more than just a paycheck and benefits?
Well, of course, now and times, because of how inflation is, everybody's looking at pay, right? I need to get paid.
Everybody.
It's me, I need to make a living.
Me too.
Very important.
Well, and that, that's not to say that through this process, that you can't come to the table and say, hey, what about a crazy idea of setting up a fund of this or that that we can draw from when we have to, in order to offer a bonus and such? I really think it just all, if you kind of look at this, and I know we're eventually going to get that total compensation piece built, because I think that's going to be important. That's, that was designed more to help recruiting than it is for, you know, right now or today. But what we really want to do is get ourselves in a position to where we do become more attractive. We won't be the most attractive, but we will be more attractive. And we just have to work the numbers and see how it all plugs in. And I'm willing to put the work in. I think this council, I'm not going to speak for them, but I, I get a sense the council is wanting to work the same way.
Yes.
Is there any further discussion?
No, but I'm guessing we'll see numbers for the next meeting that we can add in, and.
Scott's actually working on them here to get at least an item to, we're getting, try to get an item put into the budget.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, no problem. I'll give them to Eileen so she can distribute them.
Yes. How would you prefer to do it?
I'm only, I'm only hesitating on the one that has some officer information on it, we need to check on that.
Can you clean that?
Yeah, that needs to be cleaned. Just to make sure.
Yeah, yeah, please clean that up. But, no, this is good. I'm, I'm excited, I'm excited to see the numbers. I've been patiently waiting, and now that they're here. So is there any further discussion on the consideration for salary ranges and salary adjustments, council?
Now, I would encourage you though, Chief Reavis, to like have that step scale part of a program, you know, a salary program in your department, so that it's something solid to be working with.
Right, no, that's the purpose of it, so we can have, people know what they will be making.
And the LEO goes to ten steps, too. That's the federal plan.
Throughout the agencies of how many steps they have in there.
Okay, we are going to make an adjustment to the agenda. We are going to move the item number four, Discussion and Consideration and Action on Setting the Maximum Proposed Tax Rate for Fiscal Year 2022-2023. We are going to move that in front of the workshop. And we have a presentation by council member Casey Parsons.
So this is just, you know, we've covered this the last couple of meetings, and this is basically just a legal item we have to go through. I think there's been some discussion about, oh my gosh, they're raising the rate, all that sort of stuff, no. So what you do every year is you have to go through and publicly state the maximum tax rate that the council could enact. It doesn't mean that we're enacting that rate, we have no intention of acting that, enacting that rate. It's just pretty much formality. And so we discussed this over the last two meetings, and so that's what we are trying to do right now. So the current, sorry, can you hear me? I know it's not very close to me. The current year's voter approval rate, as Treasurer Garrett shared with us back on August seventh, I believe, as provided by the county, I think this is, yeah, is point two-one-seven-zero-five-four. And so that means above that rate, we would need to, I don't know all the terms that Billy went through last time, but we would basically have to go to the town of Double Oak and have to have a vote to be able to approve that. So what we've done in all the past years is, we set a rate just below that as our maximum possible rate for the year, maximum proposed tax rate for the year. Again, it's formality, we have no intention of going that high, but it is what we do. So in the past, we just typically kind of round down a little bit to where we're underneath that. So I was going to suggest and open for discussion on this. I was just going to suggest, instead of that number, to do point two-one-seven-zero-five, which just removes the four on the end. So that would be point two-one-seven-zero-five-zero. I don't know if anyone else has thoughts, or if anyone has questions or anything to discuss on that, but that's the matter at hand.
Is that lower than Denton County, on their new published rate?
So their rate's not even in a ballpark of ours?
Yeah, they're thirty.
They just lowered it to nineteen-eighty-six's rate.
I don't have Denton County's rate in front of me, I mean, we can Google it quickly if you'd like the answer.
I'll do that.
Like this, I'll let you pull up whatever.
I saw it in the Cross Timbers Gazette.
Yeah, they, they put out a press release on what they approved for their rate.
Twenty-three point three-one cents, so yes, it's underneath.
That's Denton County?
That's Denton County, twenty-three point three-one. That's twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one, hold on.
Twenty-three point three-one?
Oh wait, that's, that's.
They've got it written in, it's point two-one-seven-five-four-three. Point two-one-seven-five-four-three.
Yeah, there you go.
In the Cross Timbers Gazette.
So then we're still under that?
Yep, we're still under that, all right.
Well, that's always been a prideful thing for Double Oak.
Yes.
It's actually why we ended up moving here.
Yeah, I, yeah.
So.
It's still, that's not at all a rate we've been looking at for the budget, keep in mind, this is, this is a formality.
We're still using the point one-nine whatever rate. So, yeah, just for everybody's benefit, the maximum that we're going to set it at, that we could possibly go to still, underneath Denton County, so.
If it's a formality and we're not going over that.
Yeah, right, this is just setting the max.
So that has to be filed tomorrow according to the, to the calendar.
That is correct, that's, that was the purpose for the workshop.
I have no problem with that, right?
Excuse me, the meeting. Meeting, no problem.
Is there, is there a wording? Eileen, for the motion? Does this one require a special wording?
No.
Okay.
I don't think I can make a motion since I'm presenting. Right? I don't think I can.
Could, could you go ahead and, yeah, read, read the, the rate again, just so that town citizens?
Uh, the, the, the current maximum tax rate that we are going to set is.
So that's the voter approval rate, and that is what I had proposed.
Yes, the point two-one-seven-zero-five. So twenty-one point seven-zero-five cents on the hundred dollars.
Council discussion on that?
No further. So I'll just make a motion that we set the maximum tax rate for Double Oak budget for fiscal year twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three at point two-one-seven-zero-five.
I second that.
I would like to ask Town Secretary Eileen Kennedy to please call a vote.
Ms. Hillier?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Seanred?
Aye.
Ms. Parsons?
Aye.
Mr. Wizzen?
Aye.
Agenda items set, Discussion, Consideration, Action on Setting the Maximum Proposed Tax Rate for Fiscal Year 2022-2023 at a rate of point two-one-seven-zero-five-zero has passed. Next item on the agenda, again, we're going to move up prior to the workshop, and that is, will be item number four. And again, this is a formality. Probably didn't need to have a vote on this, but since we had referenced a vote in the last meeting, I did not want to take a chance of that. In the past, it's typically just been discussed and put out there. And that is the Discussion and Consideration and Action on Setting the Public Hearings Date for the Proposed Fiscal Year 2022-2023 Budget and Tax Rate. First public hearing on budget and tax rate, seven PM Tuesday, September sixth, 2022. The second public hearing on budget and tax rate, seven PM Monday, September nineteenth, 2022. Is anything really we need to present, Casey?
May I add something to that?
Yeah.
Since, in order to meet within the thirty-day timeline, after the council meeting on the nineteenth, we will need to have a special meeting to adopt the budget and tax rate, which I've put on the calendar for the twenty-second, if that's okay with everybody.
So maybe it's a good idea for everybody to check calendars now to see if that'll work. Yeah, yeah, but I mean personally, not this calendar, but. Your personal calendar to check.
It's on there.
Yes.
Because that's a big deal.
Right, and that's because we need the, the maximum rate posted for thirty days and all of that, right? So, okay.
Yep.
So.
So those are, I'm sorry, either date or they're both dates, the sixth and the nineteenth, or we're choosing one?
So the, yeah, if, so the, the sixth and the nineteenth will still be the public hearings. And so those will be our regular meetings that we have.
Both dates.
Both dates, correct, yes, you have to have two hearings. And so both dates, those will still be the public hearings. And then the twenty-seven, I mean, pardon me, the twenty-second at that point should just be adopting the budget and the tax rate, because we should have all of our discussions and heard from citizens and made all of our adjustments by then. This is just because of the timeline that's required after you set the propos, the maximum rate. You've got to have thirty days, so.
That's fine.
Well, you'll go ahead and, twenty-second? All right, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, and so I think we don't need anything else on that, because I agree, Patrick, I think you're right. I had checked with Berman, the same thing, just to make sure, we, we don't need to, to vote on it. We just need to publicize it and state it and get it out there on the hearings, so that's, right, Eileen, you're?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
So then, now, item, item number five will be Hold the Workshop on the 2022-2023 Budget. I'll turn it over to council member Casey Parsons.
Okay. Oh yes, you may just stop sharing at the top or disconnect, whatever.
Yeah.
Yeah, there you go. Yep, you're done. All right, good. So, um. Nope, don't do that. It's not giving me the option yet. I don't know.
You're sitting up.
You know, maybe if I, maybe I just hadn't realized that it disconnected yet, we'll try this again. There we go. Worked fine last time. Windows button plus P. Connect to wireless display. Okay. Gave me the option that time, okay, good. First, just wasn't popping up, I don't know why. Probably too many Bluetooth devices in one room, because it gave me lots of other options. Okay, so the only, so I've gone in and made just a few changes, so let me kind of walk you through the changes first that I've made. And thank you to Treasurer Garrett, who chatted with me over the weekend on a few of these items, just to make sure. So we had gotten a new document, and it's in your agenda packet from the county, that had updated amounts, because they've made it through some of their, the review items. So they've lowered the certified estimate of taxable revenue, taxable value, pardon me. So previously, this number, it was still six-hundred-and-twenty million, but I think it was around five-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand? I can't remember off the top of my head. This is the new number in the packet, and so this is what I've used. So now this is driving as a formula off of that to calculate. Now, she, Treasurer, Treasurer Garrett did make clear that the no new revenue rate does not change, and the voter approval rate does not change, because that is what the county had certified and given us. They're just telling us now that the taxable value that we're expecting to get has lowered due to some of the disputes that homeowners have had. And so we've adjusted for that, we might get updated numbers over the next two meetings as well. And we expect to adjust again for that if we get updated numbers, but to let you know, I did make that update. I also made an update to, uh, longevity pay, I had, as I was going through, I realized, just the, like, we hadn't updated, I think it was Randall's number, because he'll have a number this year. He didn't before, and there were longevity and incentive, I noticed just a few were off, like, I think it was Randall and maybe Brian, where what their year-to-date is, is already over what we had budgeted, and it was just an oversight item that there, I highlighted them as we go down, but there's, they're not large dollars. I mean, I think one changed from two-hundred to six-hundred. And so just, I highlighted them so we can see them as we go down, but to give you a heads up. And then I also updated upon, of course, council consideration, but since the Road and Drainage Committee did tell us last week that their goal was, they thought it would take forty thousand a year to be able to carry out the five-year plan. I went ahead, we had thirty-five thousand in the crack seal line, so. Um, I went ahead, we had thirty-five thousand in the crack seal line, so I went ahead and changed that to forty for now.
Thank you.
Of course, for everyone to consider, so. Um, and then a couple items, well, I guess we'll start with that, I don't know if anybody else had anything to start with, but I had a few items that, as I was working through it this weekend, I know, well, we'll just go into it. One is, we don't have anything budgeted for the building inspector. Um, and the, the, um, the way that the contract is written for the Public Works Director is, he doesn't have all of his certifications yet, he's still working towards those. And then that was for certain certifications, so there's still items that, Lynn and Eileen, correct me if I'm wrong, there's still items that, um, the building inspector will continue to do because our public works will not have all of those certifications yet, and so, um, we have nothing in that line item right now.
I, I followed up with Randall to see if we had a timeline, because, um, it's Steve Kohler, who you're talking about, and, and his contract says he gets four thousand a month um, to continue working with us, so a timeline of how long Randall would need him would be key to knowing how much we gotta put in the budget for him.
And understanding what, what tasks he would still need to perform for the town. Um, and trying to provide an estimate of that.
Is it prorated? I just think we pay him four thousand.
It's prorated.
Oh, is it?
I pulled the contract. He's, um, two thousand bimonthly, prorated, we have to make a decision. Uh, it automatically renews November thirtieth, and I wouldn't want to be.
No, I'm sorry, I meant, I meant, if we, if, if, if Randall picked up half his duties, we still gotta pay him the same amount per month, though, right?
Under that.
Yeah, that's what, that's why I'm not prorated, sorry.
Yeah.
And I think also, though, in, in considering that contract, it does renew, but it has a termination of thirty days, doesn't it? I remember when we did it, because we knew we were trying to hire someone, and so we built in a termination clause.
We have to, yeah, the, it says it will automatically extend after November thirtieth, unless we do the thirty-day advance notice.
Right, is the termination clause on the back page, or where is that?
It's section six. Uh, would be terminated by either party giving thirty days written notice to the other party.
Okay, we built that in, knowing that we were, which, I mean, you want a termination clause anyways, in case things aren't going well, but we built that in, knowing that we weren't sure what would be happening. So last year, we didn't budget anything for the building inspector, because we figured it was coming out of the Public Works Director salary line, and so that is something that we need to add to the budget.
And is he out until September twenty-third or tomorrow? Because his out-of-office emails say it's September twenty-third. It's only August.
For who, Randall?
For Randall.
I don't think so.
He should be here tomorrow.
He said he was doing training.
So it's just a typo, it's not September, it's really August.
I, I think that's a typo.
It was September twenty-two, the day before, and then it became September twenty-third, so.
Probably just updated the day or something.
But anyway, you're right, we needed to add that in, and we just need a value of months, or, you know, some idea of how long we need to keep Kohler around.
What? Would you propose, did you say something?
I said put in six, just to put a number in for right now.
Six months?
Yes, eighteen thousand.
Okay, I mean, I think the understanding is there's still going to be some payment. There's going to be some need after that, right, but then we would need to renegotiate the contract.
Probably, because if we're, if, like I said, if we, if we, if, say, he picks up half the duties, or even three-quarters of the duties, we still gotta pay him two thousand under the contract if we keep him on per month, even though he's only doing a quarter of the work. So yes, we would terminate the contract and probably renegotiate a lower fee.
And you know Randall has a year from his contract to get his certifications.
Yes.
Do we know that?
We hired him in the fall, didn't we? Or was it, no, it was at the beginning of this year?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah. So really, we need to build in probably the full forty-eight. No, I mean, oh, sorry, I'm not, I'm not thinking.
No, we got it, we got him in April, so that'd be.
That's half a year.
Yeah.
So six months.
December, yeah, half a year.
So.
Four months, four plus two.
But then we need to figure out what, what inspections that still don't fall under that, because that is, help me out, that is his plumbing inspection license? Which one?
Plumbing, I know he doesn't have yet, that's one he's working on, one that he's working on.
Plumbing is what he's working on, he can actually do all inspections underneath plumbing, but he also needs to be trained on electrical, mechanical, framing, and everything else.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's a lot of training to do yet. Do we, is it a possible fee in six months, or are we looking at a year?
No, and I don't think all of that was in the contract for the year. I don't, I don't know that I ever, meaning of Randall's contract, I don't know what that was, and we may have to just, that may be a, I don't know that that's a public forum discussion right here.
It would not be.
Um, so for me, I'm kind of on the side, erring on the side of caution that we have to go a little bit more than six months. Meaning, if you're saying prorate the forty-eight thousand, I think it probably has to be more than six months, because there's still going to be pieces that we're going to need inspection for. Or do we budget the full forty-eight and say, in the event of, no?
No.
No.
So prorate at seventy-five percent, or you still say fifty?
And then, plus. It's like thirty, wait, we have, but it's thirty-six, where are you getting forty-eight?
Forty-eight was last year's contract with.
Oh, was it?
Yeah, it's forty-eight for the year.
Oh, that's right, he went up.
He went up, yeah.
No, I put it back at thirty-six.
Okay, that's about the seventy-five percent that I was talking, so that works, I like it.
And we have a resignation from Bill that we don't have him on the payroll anymore?
Correct, he resigned back in May. Lucky dog got to retire. And I can say that, because I told him that to his face.
Did you get your formulas in right this time?
Yes, so I updated the formulas to where the, um, the T M R S is calculating off of salary, incentive pay, overtime, and longevity pay, and it's got the different pieces, so our rate of eight-point-one percent for the rest of twenty twenty-two, which is seven pay periods, and then eight-point-seven-nine percent for the nineteen pay periods, that would be in twenty twenty-three under this budget cycle. So I've got those updated. Um, and then I plugged in, so Scott did a rough calc here of the police, um, proposals.
So, so what I did, yeah, Ruben, is I got four in the, four patrol officers in the range of, starting range, because you got one, six months, and three even higher, so I used the maximum dollar amount. I got one at the seventy-nine-nine-six, which is the three-year. And I got the other two at the highest at seventy-seven-four-one-nine. Okay, so I add, those are your seven patrol officers. So I added that up, that's four eighty-six to thirty-five seventy-six, which is over last year's budget, an increase of fifty thousand one hundred fifty-nine dollars and seventy-six cents, which is a ten-point-three percent increase.
And I think I led you astray on that number.
What?
It was where, so I think it's actually more than the fifty.
I subtracted these two.
I know, but that was the number where we had built, it was that two percent raise at that point.
Oh.
So that's gonna get to the closer to the thirteen that he's talking about, I think, because it's gonna be the difference of these two, well, here, let's do this. We're gonna say equals this minus this.
Divided by.
The, Scott, what you
fourteen.
created, can you share that with the, with, um, Chief Reavis, so he can add it to the?
Yes, yes, and I, I, I kinda expect this number to change a little bit, but, uh, I just wanted a rough number that we could.
A starting point.
Correct.
But yeah, I'll, after the meeting, I'll go over what you, I did to.
Because I would expect you're gonna get it, and then you're gonna have to have your, you're gonna have to do your real tough look-in on all of that.
Yes.
And then, don't wait for us to give you permission, go ahead and make your recommendations, and then we can bring it back and plug it in here.
Will do.
Okay, and with plugging those numbers in, that gets us to where we're at a shortfall of eighty.
Council contingency out?
Council contingency, I believe, is out, but let me double-check.
I think it was out.
Yeah, I think I pulled it, because I was, I wanted to see it down there, um, why can't I?
Yes, I saw it.
You did, but.
There it is.
Okay, yeah, it's out.
Okay.
So. I mean, we can play backwards and see what, what the overall tax rate would be to make that number work.
I had some notes, Casey.
Okay, yeah, please.
So, under custodial services, the second line under town administration, the fifty-one thousand, we had eight thousand in there, um, I looked at the contracts, we have COCs.
Do you know, sorry, do you know the line item?
Oh, sorry, go to, uh, fifty-one thousand, town administration, and then it's the second line item.
Okay, thank you.
Fifty-two-one-oh-three-three.
Yep.
So we have eight thousand bucketed there, it's for custodial, is that only COCs cleaning for the building?
What, the?
The custodial cleaning, or custodial services?
No, under. Are we in, oh, yeah, the admin, the custodial services as COCs clean.
Okay, because their contract is five thousand twenty? And so do you know, are they going up next year? So can we, like, put in five thousand twenty and bring that number down from eight thousand? That'll help a little bit?
I think then, yeah, just to help under, to clarify, I think the reason why it was there, and I'm not opposed to bringing it closer to the contract, um, I think we had it there built in for COVID extra cleanings.
Yes.
And so that could be something that we could probably bring closer, do we know if, how recent that contract is, or if it's?
Expiring September thirtieth.
Ah. So maybe put it at like six, what did you say it was, five thousand?
Five thousand twenty.
So maybe put it at six until we get a better updated number? Because we figure they're going up, right, cost of cleaning supplies and everything is going up.
Go to fifty, go to fifty-five hundred.
Fifty-five hundred? Let's negotiate to fifty-five hundred, please.
And then, did we table your siren?
What, what's, what's in the siren? Uh, zero right now.
Right, if, if, if that's the line, the five, five-two-one-five-oh, if that's your siren, it said zero now. And we talked about it last week, and you were gonna check with the neighboring communities and see if they'd pony in any money?
That takes time.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, do we, but maintenance is still required, right, is there a separate line item for the maintenance?
That's what I'm looking up right now.
Okay.
I asked that question.
And the one above that one was that archive system, that five thousand?
That's.
Did you find the five thousand offset, or the archive system we talked about last week?
It's seven eighty-five for this, for our maintenance.
I'm just trying to.
On, um, the archive system, there was a five thousand, and we were like, thinking it was offset somewhere else.
There we go.
Last time we met.
Thought it was the second line. So, oh, we've got a six hundred, what'd you say it was?
Seven eighty-five.
So the five thousand's good on that line item, above the siren?
There's not. Okay, so we just updated the maintenance number for the siren to seven eighty-five.
Yeah. I was checking the archive system from the five thousand last week, that we were like, is that offset somewhere else?
Is that offset somewhere else?
Because it was laser fish at the last meeting, and we were like, thinking, was the five thousand on some other line item, too? We wanted to make sure it wasn't in there twice. I guess we didn't look at that.
No, I think you're right, God, you know, we.
We just don't want to double count.
Right, we asked that question last time, and we don't understand where, if laser fish is indeed five thousand dollars, why are actuals are seven twelve, I guess is what the question came down to. So are we paying it out of a different line item, and so, that's gonna skew that line item up that we budgeted, and then now this one's gonna be set at five thousand also.
Also, under Public Works, uh, under the computer support, that does not include the six thousand dollars a year for, uh, iWorks, the software.
Oh, sorry, I'm in the wrong line, I was thinking, well, that's a, okay. So, we need to add six thousand dollars to that for the iWork software, because we, we've never been, that's a new item, and that's why we missed it there? Okay, because we had the purchase of it last year, right? Okay, so this should be ninety-five hundred then?
So it's six thousand to support it, and it was ten thousand to buy it?
Um.
Or?
So what they're saying is, yes, six thousand for the support per year?
The seventeen thousand was to actually buy the software that was approved by council on the previous. Um, but we just paid the annual support at six thousand dollars, so there wasn't enough in there, and I don't know what else comes out of that account.
So maybe that's something we could have clarified before, I mean, we'll put a number in here, but have clarified before the next meeting if it's gonna be the thirty-five hundred plus the six thousand, or?
I'm sure Randall could probably clarify that for you. Are you looking up laser fish?
And then, um, thank you, Eileen, for getting the T M L. So the red numbers now, are these numbers we can go up to without a, um, audit of the bill, because they still seem low for the contents?
Uh, well, that was, um, I got the best guess in, estimate from, uh, the fire chief on the fire station.
No, that was the, the hundred thousand was what was in the truck, not the truck itself, plus all the other stuff I, I, I know, I'll for you.
Well, yeah, I, that other stuff, I added it up, and that's what, um, Kathy had also, she had said that the helmets were about six hundred dollars apiece.
Yeah. I'll add it up.
And the town hall, only five hundred thousand in contents?
What, the contents of town hall? Well, that's the guesstimate that Brian came up with, with the server and.
And this room, and all the equipment, and police department, and all your stuff, and your stuff in your admin offices. I just want to make sure we're covered, because if we had a, a tornado with our freaky weather.
Well, yeah, but the T M L doesn't do that, would have to pay some.
Or does anybody in town have expertise? I just would not want us to be underinsured and then have a catastrophe happen.
Why don't we see if we can at least get someone to give us an estimate? And then we can kind of make it, uh, an adjustment from there, or have some discussion about it.
Yeah, because we have to cover the premiums, and they're just gonna go up.
Well, yeah, I sent these numbers to T M L to see if, um, how it would affect, you know, our premiums and everything, and they were gonna be, they're working on it, so.
And the cars too, well, the vehicles will be coming too?
I sent to the fire department and the police department their vehicles to make sure everything was on there correctly, and, um, I got the Tahoe covered on there. So that's not in the schedule, the new Tahoe.
Right, it's not on the schedule.
FD equipment's eight hundred forty thousand, seven hundred fifty dollars.
That's your equipment, right?
That's, yes, that's our equipment. That's not the vehicles.
Correct.
Right, because the vehicles are on a separate policy. And we have two sirens right now for the sixty thousand?
We, we, yes, we, we, we own two sirens, um, the maintenance is seven eighty-five, but we only pay maintenance on one siren. Town of Flower Mountain covers the other one.
Right, but for the insurance, the value of it, it's got two-
Replacing will be sixty thousand dollars, that's correct, that's correct.
I just asked if we could get that for next meeting too, because that's gonna tie into whether we can keep the rate we're trying to work with. I wanted to, uh, under administration, we have the computer supplies, software category, that's your five-two-one-oh-three-one. That's in there for twenty-five thousand, and then we also have the technology fund, five-two-one-oh-three-four. So are, I'm sorry, are would they earmarked for improvements in administration? Um, is that maybe a server for them?
Uh, we do need a server upgrade, um, coming in the next year, and that's-
So is that the twenty-nine thousand for this?
I don't know the exact numbers, or if Brian's been able to get a quote from Data Max. I, I think, I'm, I'm gonna speculate that that was kind of a ballpark number when that was put in there.
Okay.
Um, because we haven't, we haven't got to that point yet, but it's, it's coming.
Yeah, we need to clarify those numbers. It looks like they're the same as last year. So maybe, Eileen, could you work with Brian on those two, on the, since they're under administrative, is that how that would work? So the computer supplies and software in the technology fund, under the administrative? Because I was thinking he had said he had kind of helped to build out budgets, I think, um, so we could see if those are- Did you have other items that you wanted to go through?
Well, the other one, we haven't dealt with yet, because it was the TRMS, um, funds that came out of the SLRF funds that we know we can't do, but that's this year's budget, so.
Actually, and all, yeah, and I can give you a little update on that. Um, I actually, meaning the pension piece?
Yeah, but that'd be this year's budget, we have to get sorted out.
Yeah, so I can go ahead and give you an update on that actually though, because I was doing some research on the SLF RF funds this weekend, and there's a FAQs document out there from the Treasury Department that addresses that specifically, and actually says that if it is a, um, an amount that was paid by the town for an eligible premium payment, essentially, is what it says, and the town would be under normal employment obligations to match that, that is a qualified funding of the pension fund. It, what they intended when they said you can't fund a pension fund is, they didn't want towns to go, oh, we've got one of those unfunded pension funds, and to dump it in there and suddenly say it's funded. And so I sent that email, I sent an email over the weekend to Carl Deaton to ask him if he had considered that section, um, when he did his report, and his response was, no, I did not, I think you're right, I think that qualifies. And so I, I let, um, Eileen and the mayor pro temp know that tonight, and I'll forward that email. I literally got it fifteen minutes before the meeting. So I'll forward it for that to be discussed, and I'll include, um, attorney, town attorney Berman too, so that he can have that, and then we can decide to go forward. But it sounds like we don't need to pull that amount back out, that that was under the, the guidelines by the Treasury Department, that isn't allowed use of that.
So I just saw two weather sirens, and then there's an outdoor siren.
Yeah, so one, that, I searched a minute ago, whenever we saw it, we were on the outdoor siren, it was zero, and then the weather siren is the, um,
Six hundreds.
Well, we changed it to the seven eighty-five, that's what I was saying, and he just updated, yeah.
All right, good, because-
So we updated that one, but, yeah, there's two different line items for that, and so we took the one, um, this one has nothing, it's down in the other, the weather siren has seven eighty-five now.
Um, under the police department, there's a line item five-five-zero-two-four-nine for external contracts, and we got six thousand dollars in there. What is it for?
Uh, one of the ones that comes off, off my head is, um, Leeds Online, where we, um, investigate pawn activity, uh, for line items, uh, that one, it's billed with, uh, fifteen hundred dollars. Uh, we have, um, Evertell is what we use to communicate through text with officers, so we can keep it, uh, saving on the server, so there's no deletion of them. Uh, that's another, uh, five hundred. Um, we have, I can't think of what else is on there. Eileen, is it?
What's the final cover?
Uh, that one's the redaction software, uh, that we pay monthly to be able to redact videos. Uh, if somebody does an open record request, we have to do it, so that's one of them.
Your TCLID.
Okay, so the TCLID is, uh, where, uh, TCO, who carries, uh, our commission, holds everybody's training. Uh, it's where we're able to access officers' training, keep up with hours, report, uh, new hires and officers who left and so forth.
So, you also have a human resources line item of fifteen hundred?
We, we usually do that when we're, um, uh, when we hire somebody, uh, pay for their physical drug test. If we had to go to a psych test, we pay for that. Uh, we pay for our ID cards when we hire somebody, uh, that's what-
Okay, so that's your recruitment kind of fund? But the six thousand sounds right?
Yes, there's, I'm still waiting to see if, um, TCO, uh, bought out the TCLID, and there's a possibility that, once that happens, we, uh, will receive it free.
I have a question, just because I'm, I don't know how many students we have from Double-O Crossing here for the school, but it looks like our five-year average on the crossing guard is lower than the amount we've been putting in there. Would it be hazardous to reduce that amount a little bit? Maybe say, three thousand or thirty-five hundred dollars? That's, that's the fifty-five oh-two-fifty-six line?
Let's, let's look at a year, a real year, that's not-
Yeah, I'm just looking at the five-year average, but I'm, I'm really wondering-
These were zeros, and I don't remember if that was, because it was on another line item?
And during COVID, she wasn't there, so that's impacted.
I'm, I'm just, I just don't know what the usage is, so this is more, it's not that I don't care, because it's a safety issue, I'm just trying to like, understand-
Yeah, is it accurate?
What, you know, how much of that really gets used, go, really now that we're back to school, you know?
Well, we do have a full-time crossing guard.
Well, a part of the crossing guard, comes out of the child safety fund.
The crossing guard comes out of the child safety fund?
Part of, part of the use.
We have a crossing guard line item, five-five-zero-two-five-six.
That's what I just asked about.
She's got it elsewhere.
Yeah, but she's, it comes out of a different fund?
The dollar amount that we get, uh, for the child safety is not enough.
I'm making, I'm asking.
For the crossing guard.
There you go, okay. Okay, actuals, uh, hold on, where was that, that's down there?
Excuse me, if we can have one conversation, please. So, if I'm hearing you correct, Eileen, so we, we get some funding that we use to pay the crossing guards? How much is that?
Yeah, because there's our actuals for the last two years, right there.
Yeah.
That's what we spent, that's what we've spent.
But that's also during COVID. We have those, and then we didn't have a crossing guard for a while, right? Yeah.
And then, once a year, in November, from Denton County, it's around thirty-three, thirty-four hundred dollars.
Okay.
Okay. Because right now, our actuals for the year are just under four thousand, so we don't really want to go by that average. Right? I mean, we're saying we've-
Well, even going down to four thousand is maybe closer to reality.
Yeah, four, I was, I was gonna say, put it at four thousand.
Or maybe a little higher, because we're already at that, right? I mean-
Yeah, but I haven't, I haven't taken the money out of the child safety fund yet, to offset-
To offset it?
Expense.
Okay, gotcha.
Yeah.
So four thousand-
Bring it down to four thousand?
So if we indeed really spend seven thousand and we get thirty-three hundred from the county, let's put it at four thousand.
I like it.
Okay.
Thank, thank you for all the enlightenment.
I didn't know that part.
Casey, would you mind dropping down to the bottom?
Sure. So really, we need to pay, play with the rate and see where we are right now, and keep in mind, so what we need to do tonight is at least have a proposed budget. There's still, we have two more.
Correct.
You know, the two with the public hearing, um, where we can make changes, and like we said, chief's gonna look at his budget and really work through those numbers, um, but we need, we have to have a proposed budget that balances in order to post that with the maximum rate that we set. And so I think, for one thing, we at least need to-
What's our variance right now, with all this, or, with the eighty-one thousand?
Eighty-one thousand, but I'm also getting a text from Treasurer Garrett saying that funding was not adequate on the balance sheet to cover the full wages for the crossing guard. So-
Right, that's why we budgeted in the PD for crossing, because we had been using all of them strictly the crossing guard, the child safety-
The child safety, and so that's why it was zero before, because we were just using that from the balance sheet, and that's why she's saying we had to increase the budget.
Right.
Okay, okay, excellent. Thank you, Billy. Let me know if you still have disagreements with that, or if we didn't get, if I didn't understand your text rights. Appreciate that she's watching while she's, um, taking care of her mom.
Yes, thank you, Billy.
Okay, so, I built in a column over here to allow us to leave these what they are, and, um, start playing with a proposed rate, and so, and I only did this, just so we can kind of see it separate, um, anyways, so what I'm gonna do now is just link these over here. I don't think I'm gonna create a circular reference here, because the way I did it. And this number is driven off of, so we can play with the rate here, and this number is driven off of, it's taking this new certified estimate of taxable value against a rate to give us what the proposed revenue would be coming into our budget. And this percentage here is to show year over year the change. So we're looking at the revenue that we have on our twenty-twenty-two budget, compared to what we're saying in this proposed number that we are adjusting to get the proposed change. So I was just playing and typing in numbers to make sure it worked, and so that was kind of where I got to. I think because we saw eighty-one down at the bottom, this is not going to cover us, because I believe it's showing, actually, that number I don't think we can compare to the eighty-one, let's go see what happens. So that brings us to, yeah, so pretty close, so we're at a thirty, almost a thirty-five thousand dollar shortfall at that point. So, just, just to see what it would be, I say we look to see what it would be to try and balance it, and then adjust from there and continue working, so, okay? Um, and I am not as good in my brain as some other people, so, um, because we're at point two-two right now, we set point two-one-seven, so let's just do point two-one as a guess.
Yeah, we're very close.
It is. So we're still a little bit short. Ooh, what?
Close.
Close. Two hundred? Instead of over, I'd mean eighty-eight? Oh, you need the bottom number, um, so let's say what point two-one-one is. That's still gonna be a little short, right? Point two-one-one. Oh, okay, let me undo. See where we get. Yep, so thirteen hundred. Now, keep in mind, this has zero for council contingency. Um, but it's a starting point for now.
We have so much to-
We've got balance sheet, yeah. Um, which, on that note, just because I thought of it during budget, so I just kind of want to voice it for us to think about in the future. You know, last week Randall was talking about the intersection of, right here, Wakedon, Cross Timbers, Wakedon Extension, Kings. Um, and last year with the council, it was brought to us that when Wakedon was completed, we were going to need to redo that intersection, remember, because the way it all ties in, and then that was what he was bringing up last week as well, um, I don't, so I was thinking that it was something we needed to budget in this, um, budget, but we have a roads-
We have a road budget.
Yes, but I just want to, we need, at some point, we need to keep that in the back of our mind, so I don't think we need to make any changes for it right now. Um, but that is something that's gonna be coming up, and when we're rolling over the amount from the current year that we have excess, keep in mind, a lot of that's already allotted to other roads, so we just have to, it just popped into my brain, so I thought I would share it.
Yeah, we just need to understand what our balance fund is as it relates to our overall.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, but that is something that we'll need to do. Okay, so, next we want to work on the thirteen hundred, is that our goal? Lower colar, because that one's definitely an open item. Well, that would be nice, sorry. Okay, and so then that gets us down to six-eighty-seven ninety-nine?
Randall has to get a couple more of his sorts done this year.
I'll let you talk to him about that. Um, six-eighty-seven ninety-nine, I'm hearing contingency. Sorry, the mouse is so slow when you use this thing. So as it stands right now, that brings us to a balanced budget with a proposed rate of point two-one-one. Um, which is below the max rate that we set, and below our current rate of point two-two. And we'll continue working on it, unless someone else has changes they want to make tonight. I think we've got some open items that need to be answered.
Yes.
Um, and nail those numbers down to let us kind of work it more next time.
And I'll get with Chief Rivas on what I did, my calculations. And I'll get with Chief Rebus on what I did, my calculations.
Okay, and Eileen, if we could meet just shortly after this to make sure I know what to give you, since Treasurer Garrett usually does that, to, what to give you to be able to post. Um, cause we can, of course, clean this up and take some of our notes out and stuff to make it internet-worthy.
You need a signature on the Denton County paperwork.
Yeah.
Thank you, council, thank you. Okay, it was very, um, well done and working together. Thank you, chief. Assistant Chief Gaines for your input. Is there any further business we need to discuss, council?
I just wanna say, uh, I wanna thank Brian Schultz, Officer Schultz, for, uh, all the help he's provided in providing data for me. Uh, we stretch him to the limit and he's still able to help us out. Uh, he's saved the town thousands of dollars when it comes to equipment, he does his research, he goes and speaks with them after we get a quote and able to reduce that, uh, uh, that amount of money. Uh, he's also was able to, appears that he's gonna be able to, uh, um, put the PD on laser fish so we can store our data, uh, cause we were gonna have to pay a company twenty-five, twenty-seven thousand dollars, uh, to use them to have them put it on, but Brian was able to figure something out, something happened and, um, on the company's fault, the laser fish fault. And he called them out and they're like, well, we made a mistake and, uh, you do have this service, so it might cost us a little bit, but overall, um, he's done a great job for the town when it comes to saving money.
Yes, Brian, and just in a short time, I've got to know him, he's, he's awesome.
Thanks, Brian.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you, Brian. Find more savings, Brian.
Is there a motion for town council to adjourn?
I so.
Move.
Exactly.
The meeting is now adjourned at nine oh-nine PM. Thank you, town citizens, for being here, very much appreciated.